Like to call tonight's meeting to order, please. They have motion to alter the regular business meeting. Motion by Michael. Second by Flo Santini. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please rise for the political agents and remain standing for a moment of silence. And would you please keep your thoughts and prayers for the Sadihiani family with the recent passing of Dr. Hassan Sadihiani?
Go with you, please, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a motion for the approval of the board meeting agenda for this evening.
I'll move it.
By Tara.
Second.
Second by Nan Dunn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a presentation this evening, summer school field research, one, two, and three presentation on ash trees and biocontrol release of 2023 product.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Carol. I'm Michael Wood's stepdaughter.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Just hold it close to you.
Oh, yeah. Hi, my name is Elizabeth Carol. I'm Michael Wood's stepdaughter. If you already know that, I probably look very familiar. Anyways, this is my third year, third and final year of doing this wonderful program. Thank you. And for the past three years, I have learned environmental consequences of the interconnectedness of the societies, of the spreading of the EAB, also of the ash borer. By being a participant of field studies, I have developed leadership skills, teamwork, and true nature in science. We are here tonight to speak to you about our findings, since tomorrow's issues will be forever connected to all of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
In 2021, we began studying local ash tree population and have continued this on. We have a total of eight hundred and sixty-one trees in our data set. Tonight, we will discuss our findings and present upon how we hope to make a positive impact on our local ecosystem by introducing three parasitic wasps. What is an ash tree? An ash tree is a dominant tree in our local deciduous forests. They fill an important niche by having a very tall canopy, providing shade to the forest floor and habitats at high dwelling birds and insect species. In our area, in the past notable five years, there has been a significant impact on the ash tree population. Many of the trees are losing their canopy, bark, and dying or falling.
The population of ash is under predation of the Emerald Ash Borer invasive species from China. It has been so successful at decimating the ash population because of its lack of natural predators and unrehearsed fumes of life.
However, USDA has been working on three parasitic wasps that prey upon Emerald Ash Borer and different life cycles. We applied to participate in the program last fall and were accepted. We are the only site in our region to be releasing these species.
One of these, wait. One of these types is Tetrischelani. It is most effective with ash trees in smaller diameters, and it appears to be the most effective overall, though that could just be because it is the most studied. It counts EAB larvae by laying eggs on adult EAB. Spethia schelini is more successful in ash trees with smaller diameters. They lay their eggs in the emergence holes of their EAB leave behind, and the larvae upon hatching consume EAB eggs. And the ubis are by far the most versatile, working just as well in smaller or larger ash tree diameters. However, they need, they cannot spread out as far, so therefore more of them need to be put in a smaller area. These three species, these three species take two to three years to establish. Over that time, we will continue to monitor the environment, and we hope that they will drastically decrease the EAB population.
Using the, using the data provided by the USDA, we selected an appropriate location to concentrate our release of the biocontrol based on the diversity and population of healthy and declining ash trees. The location had a variety of small healing trees and large DBH declining trees. Over twelve thousand each species was released. Next season, we will begin a population survey and expand our release.
In 2023, we surveyed eight hundred and sixty-one new anchor trees. We changed our initial canopy classification system to align with the USDA reporting protocols. Trees within one are at a hundred percent of full canopy cover, while trees within three are forty to fifty percent. That by the zero cover. Forty-one point four percent of trees were recorded as zero percent canopy cover. This is an increase of fourteen percent in mortality rate for 2023. These three charts are the same trees from 2021 to 2022 and 2023. The black represents northern instances of that. From 2021 to 2023, there was an increase in tree mortality of up to thirty-eight percent. From our original data set in 2021, forty-two percent of trees are lingering or teens healthy.
We see a short presentation of data before. On the left, we have previous years' worth of trees, which have significant more amount of green trees than on the right, which is the current here's the trees. However, this data can be flawed in that the red trees should show up better than the green ones. So you can't, it's almost as looks, but overall, there is, there is significant enough of entries from here.
Our team recognizes that the rapid mortality rate of ash trees means ecosystems will be immediately affected. We chose to study two quadrants to compare the contrasting microecosystems. Quadrant one was within our release site and contained milky ash trees. Quadrant two was outside the release site, and many dead ash trees were present. Our findings were clear and stark.
So since quadrant one was set up within the release site of our biological controls, there was a high biodiversity found within all of the little mini quadrants, as we like to call them. And each shape in one of those represents a major plant species within that little quadrant. As you can see, each one meter square has high biodiversity, which yields a stable microecosystem, and they are able to support the current systems for many.
Quadrant two had dead ash present. As you can see by the photos and diagram, the majority of plants within this quadrant are Japanese barberries, another base species. These have a low biodiversity and represent some changing ecosystem that is lost.
To sum up everything I've stated previously, ash mortality has increased, but hopefully the parasitoids will help reduce the rate of mortality in the subsequent years. We also set up quadrants to study the effects of the EAB or Emerald Ash Borer's presence on our native forests. And this quadrant comparison data will help us study environmental impacts and allow us to develop recommendations for ecosystem preservation. And our recommendations and ideas for the future may be presented by Shane Seer.
For our actions for the future, our plan is to survey the wasp population to see its effects on not only the Emerald Ash Borer, but to see if its population can also support itself and carry on throughout the environment. We're also going to try to survey the surrounding area around the trees to check for the biodiversity around the trees, see what species are inhabiting areas of both dead and live trees, to see what the effect of the trees dying or being brought back would do to the environment. We're going to tag trees in areas that we haven't been before. This will ensure that we find, this will ensure that we find more trees so we can understand them even better and understand the spread of the Emerald Ash Borer throughout our ecosystem. We're going to edit the twenty-two and three map. This will ensure that not only can we get more trees, we have a more set boundary of where we are, and we understand our area better. So we can understand the spread of the ash borer, and hopefully we can understand the wasps effectiveness at combating the ash borer.
So throughout this study, we had split into four major teams.
The first team would be the field team, which goes out into the field to tag trees and collect data. This data will consist of the canopy cover, ID loadout that happened within the tree, any particular damage, the amount of bark on the tree. We even go out and find coordinates for the ash trees to be mined.
Here's the data team, which managed all new and old data and writes statistical analysis on said data.
Then you have the release team, which releases parasites to the environment around the trees.
And then finally, there was the report team, which researched and wrote scientific papers in relation to our study.
So I think it's safe to say we had a very successful summer, and we learned a lot of valuable lessons. But none of this would have been possible without some very important people. So very special thanks to the Ford Jervis School District for offering the course, SUNY ESF and Dr. Demont for offering the field research credit, and the Brandwide Institute for the use of their facilities.
Thank you very much. That was a great presentation. A lot of work out there on that. Thank you.
Casey, you don't want to talk?
Yeah, it's pretty light.
We did a great job.
You did a great job.
So I do have one question. So as you drive along and you see all the blight on the ash trees, which is, you know, very visible. So once a tree, once an ash tree like that has that blight, the chances of it of surviving are?
So, so what happens is, what we're, what we're simply studying is like a canopy dieback. So we start seeing like those lower branches on the ash trees start dying back.
Right.
And what happens is trees under stress like to send out these things called eporamic shoots. So sometimes this eporamic shoots can produce a lingering ash, which means that it's trying to continue living. And what we're going to start, what we've been noting in our past couple of years is the eporamic shoots to see if our ash trees are in fact lingering. Because once you have established lingering ash trees, USDA wants to further get involved, and they want to take the roof wraps and use that to help make resistant trees as well. So, you know, we're hopeful that some of our ash trees will produce lingering ash, or some of our trees, especially the smaller ash trees, do seem to be a little bit more resistant to the Emerald Ash Borer. So we're hoping that, you know, that can establish the population. There's also seed collection that we can start doing and preserve them once you have enough population of the biocontrol. So we're hoping not all is lost, but the kids have done a great job setting up quadrants to see how we can protect our ecosystem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for all of your support. Any other questions? Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Next are administrative reports. Our first is superintendent school, Dr. John Bell.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just a few quickies for here. First, summer school has concluded, and the custodians are working fast and feverishly to clean all those rooms to get ready for open day. It's also the time fall sports have started, and if anybody is migrating to a new school this year, the new student orientations and all different schools are coming around down the line. Some have actually already started, so please take note of that. The third thing I wanted to mention is that the district calendar, our copies came to the DO today. So they'll be hitting mailboxes around town in the next few days. And just, I want to say thank you to Bonnie Whitney and John's office, who did a great job coordinating all of this. The calendar is beautiful. There's so many pictures. There's lots of information. And I think the thing that parents are going to like the most is that there are so many more events on this calendar than we've ever had before. From every concert, every musical, every year graduation, every moving up celebration, everything you could imagine that we could think of and truly lock in, we did. So this calendar is full. So much more information than it's been in the past, which would be great at the end of the year, because then they won't be calling the schools saying, hey, what is this? What is that? I didn't take a half a person off. Now it'll all be in the calendar for parents. The parents will have the ability to plan ahead and take time off to come see these special events. But thanks to Bonnie and everybody involved, there's probably ten or fifteen of us that authored pages in this booklet, in this calendar. So thanks to everybody who helped make a really beautiful booklet. Today, I spent about six hours with the architects and the interior designers as we moved our way around this campus and the old middle school. Things like everything from flooring to accent colors to curtains in the nurse's office and things of that nature, doing all the little details to get everything ready to roll with phase one at the middle school, with phase two that's coming to 209 next summer, and picking out things like floor colors and wall colors and that for phase three, which the board has approved in May. And just to give everybody a timeline, we've been going at phase one at the middle school for over a year. We continue to make good progress there. Phase two is part of the $65 million project that the board has approved in 2020, but it hasn't started yet. That's the part that'll happen here in the high school and at ASK to convert it to a middle school. That will all happen in late spring and into next summer. And then phase three is the one that the board has just approved in May. And some of that is going to begin as early as March 1st, believe it or not. We'll start March 1st with the goal, if we can pull it off, that graduation will not be in Chase Field next year. It'll be at Alnet Field on the brand new turf and the brand new lights and the new digital scoreboard. So it could be really, really big then. So we'll break ground at Alnet as early as possible. The reason we can do that is there are no spring sports on Alnet. So you can't do that at Chase Field because it would interrupt the track season. But since we all have a spring sport at Alnet, we can start right around March 1st if the weather cooperates. So, so it's going to get confusing with phases one, two, and three. But the really good news is all three of them will be done before next September. So everything is going to come to a crazy climactic ending next summer. But it's all great stuff for the kids in Ford Jervis now. Boy, it's great stuff. We restarted on this, but we call it phase four, right, buddy? That's a story for another night. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next is assistant superintendent for business, Mr. John Penn.
I was told I'm not allowed to take vacation next summer, so we'll see what happens. So anyway, update on the land swap. Is that my mic?
Yeah.
We're talking about the land next to the middle school project. The city is continuing to clear the land. And once it's cleared, we will actually move forward with the official closing or the land swap. After that, there is some work that needs to be done on our end. The trailers that are there need to be moved. There's this low concrete wall that needs to be moved. We'll take care of it. We're going to level off the land and bring in some gravel. And our goal, active goal, is to have this somewhat prepared for the mental town being. At bare minimum, we'll at least have staff park there other than opening it to the public. But we should get it done, open it to the public, but a little bit of work needs to be done. So that's where we're at with the land swap. Hopefully, we'll move forward by the next meeting. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next are consent agenda items. Item A is the minutes from the Board of Education meeting from August 8, 2023. Item B is the minutes from the CPSE meeting minutes from August 7, 2023. Item C is the minutes from CSE meeting minutes from May, from May 5, 23 to 8, 23. Item D is the treasurer's financial report. Do you have a motion on those items? Moved by Michael. Second?
Second.
Second by Tara. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next are the personnel employment agenda items. Item A is a leave of absence. Item B is a resignation instructional staff, position 258, library media specialist. Item C is appointment, support staff, vacancy 2531, temporary summer school substitute cook manager. Item D is appointment, vacancy 2535, curriculum coordinators and co-curriculum coordinators and coaching appointments for the 23-24 school year. Item E is appointment, support staff, vacancy 2563, beginning veto liaison for the 2023-24 school year. Item F is appointment, support staff, vacancy 2567, position 3934, provisional education services associate. Item G, increase of hours for support staff, vacancy 2570, position 410, permanent school monitor. Item H, appointment, support staff, transportation liaison for the 23-24 school year. Item I, appointment, administrative arch and ACs principals for the 23-24 school year. Item J, appointment, support staff, substitute food service helper. Item K, appointment, support staff, substitute teacher aide and substitute school monitor. Item L, appointment, substitute teachers and nurses for the 23-24 school year. Item M, amendment to board docs, personnel agenda items from August 8, 2023. Do you have a motion on those items? I'll move it. Moved by Bill Barrett.
Second.
Second by Annie Foster. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sure, John?
Congratulations to everybody who was appointed. And also, one of the appointees is here tonight, Jamie Wilkowski is here. Jamie, I wanted to say hello to everybody. Well, good morning. We're glad to have you.
Thank you. Item seven are action items. Item A is the adoption of the tax warrant for the 23-24 school year. Do you have a motion?
I'll move it.
Moved by Flo Santini, second. By Michael Witt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B is the district wide safety plan for the 23-24 school year. Do you have a motion on that, please? Moved by Jason.
I'll second it.
Second by Annie. Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C is scholarship, the Edward R. Kennedy, Edward J. and Donald T. Smith Business Scholarship. Do you have a motion on that? Moved by Michael.
Second.
Second by Flo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D is the Orange Ulster Health Plan Municipal Agreement. Do you have a motion on that, please? Moved by Annie. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E is an appointment for the lead evaluation evaluator of teachers for the 23-24 school year. Do you have a motion on that?
I'll move it.
Moved by Tara.
I'll second it.
Second by Annie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F is the approval to add CSE vendors, Catskill, Narrows, Psychology. Do you have a motion on that, Michael? Second? Flo? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G is the CSEA side letter agreement, vacation schedules, stipends, and relief fees. Do you have a motion on that? Moved by Jason, second. Second by Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H is a consultant agreement, Capital Project Consultant, Donald Kreese.
I'll second that.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I is a capital project change order. Do you have a motion on that? Moved by Bill Barrett, second. Second by Flo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. And next are committee reports, board member items. Dear Park Liaison?
Yes, just would like to remind everybody our September 11 service is coming up. It's a Monday, so it is a school day, but I know we've put out all our invites and to come and join us on our memorial service for that day. And also Hudson Valley Honor Flight, we are taking off October 21st, 2023, Stewart Airport. So either be part of our sand daw or welcome home for our veterans. Thank you. Also, there are two roads that are being paved. I sent Kristen, the one, which is Pinpack, the low, no, low Pinpack's getting a culvert. And I'm sorry, I don't remember the road. I think it's up by Galley Hill. I will get that. I'll give it to superintendent tomorrow. I forgot all about it. I'm very busy tonight. But we're having the road paved, but there's those buses going out now, right? Okay, so we're good. Just get it dried up. I'll send it to you tomorrow. And so we'll drive it. It's going to be up by Galley Hill and a culvert. The culvert could be three days, and they're not going to be able to go through it. And it's low part of Pinpack.
Thank you, Flo.
Always have a nice for doing the day outside.
Yes, that's what they're trying to get at for that. Yes.
Board Jervis Liaison, Annie?
Yep, we are now getting filed finally again, our 30th Annual Fall Follicle Festival, which will be Sunday, September 24th, from 10 to 5, in historic downtown. And we did very well on Italian festival. The Italian music, everybody.
Thank you, Annie. Next, buildings and grounds. Michael?
Thank you. We met on August 9th, 10:00 AM, at the district office, 150 Pike Street. Delon Frey, myself, Dr. Bell, John Tim, Don Kreese, Josh Jennings were all present. Few topics that we touched on, phase one. We were updated by Don Kreese on the current middle school project, and we've switched to Savin as our construction managers. The project is now moving along very well. Phase two will begin in May or June. It should finish around August of 2024. Phase two is all work on the Route 29 campus, at the high school and the new middle school. Finances, John Tim brought the committee up to speed on the finances related to the capital project. I am proud to report that the project continues to still be under budget. Phase three, this was approved by the voters in May of twenty twenty-three. Drawings go up to SED in October, with an expected approval by January or February. The project includes the high school, will be renovations to the auditorium, the relocation of the library and a complete overhaul of Chase Field and the track. At the old middle school, there will include a generator, a new parking lot, and improvements to Glenette Field. Mr. Tim spoke on the land swap already. We're working on that as we speak. One fifty Pike Street, closing is held on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Making staff is making interior renovations to provide office space for our IT group, which has moved in, and our food service departments. The twenty-three, twenty-four budget capital projects. Biggest items in the category are the installation of the armored one security building of the high school, ASK and HBE, as well as the new lights and scoreboard at Chase Field. Future projects, we're generating a possibleist for phase four. Hopefully, we'll be working on that in the next several months. We also continue to explore energy-saving projects with my server. Our next meeting is still to be announced. Thank you.
Michael, thank you. Next, report by Bill Harris. Bill, on the state convention.
Thank you. Thursday, July twenty-seventh through Saturday, July twenty-ninth, I attended the New York State School Board Association's Leadership in Education Event, Convention that was held at Alden A. There were three hundred twenty board members and superintendents that were there from all eleven areas throughout New York State. Right now, there is currently five thousand school board members on boards all over the state of New York. The board looks in their packets. I made everyone an outline of what I did that weekend. And just for the public, I just want you to know that the goal of this event was to have open sessions and conversations to understand and address some of the most urgent challenges and questions that face all of our public schools in New York today. And the topics that were spoken about throughout the three dates were graduation measures, staffing shortages, which includes recruiting and maintaining staff, unrealized learning, which is pretty much catching up since the pandemic, closures, artificial intelligence, which is new technology being used to shape the future for the New York State schools, student and staff wellness, combating substance abuse, school discipline reform, school safety, elevating student voices, and building a culture of positivity. Out of these nine lectures and conversations, I attended six of them. They were anywhere from one and a half to two and a half hours each. It was very eventful. It was very intense. And I brought back some information that I gave to Dr. Bell and Kristen. And if anybody needs anything elaborated upon, just please reach out to me. I took about fourteen pages of notes. There's about two hundred pages of PowerPoint slides that you can see. I just wanted to let you know that it was very worthwhile going. I learned a lot. I made a lot of contacts. And I'm actually looking forward to going again next, next year. And our first meeting of the Orange County School Board Association will be the second Wednesday in September right now. Thank you.
Bill, thank you and excellent report. Thanks for representing us up there. I think that's it as far as reports. Okay, next, our board member comments. Nan, got anything?
Just a thank you to Casey's group and look forward to the start of the year.
Okay. Jason?
I'll do that.
Okay. Annie?
I always enjoy the presentations because I learn a lot. Now that I go out in my beach houses and we take walks, not going to start poking at the trees, not be too many trees there, it's always a pleasure to see them come and do the free up the presentation. And it's a very good process for me because I don't want to talk to them. Very jargon. And I do love, you know, having a state school year and that. Mark and outlets, the public kids are really energetic and really can't wait when school starts. And I just love going in the store and seeing the little kid get your back, you know, back and their shoes, you know.
Okay, thank you, Annie. Michael?
Just a quick walk to some of our new appointed staff. Also, it's great to, I got to see the day-to-day workings of Casey's program this year. I bring Alyssa back and forth every day. I also just want to give a quick shout out to our guidance department at the high school, our IT department, by the way, worked with me this week. They're incredible. And the turnaround of our specialized department is mind-blowing to see what is being done in this school district. So as a personal thank you to all of you, based on my kids reaching out and needing some assistance, it's just incredible to see where our district is really coming last couple of years. Thank you all, all of you.
Thank you, Michael.
Bill, anything else?
Just looking forward to another start of a great school year. I also look forward to working with all of you again this year and moving in a positive direction into the future with all our faces and everything that's going on here. So let's move forward and go forward.
Thank you, Phil. Annie? Flo? I'm sorry.
Flo, we're the Golden Girls. Go ahead, Flo.
Kara?
I just want to wish everyone a great start to the school year.
Very good. Thank you. I'm having problems with my computer. Kara's going to read the dates to remember.
Kara, real quick, I want to add one more thing. When the ten-month staff come back on Tuesday, September fifth, everybody meets here. We have a district-wide meeting in the auditorium. We're going to start something new and nobody else has heard this until tonight. We're going to invite retirees, anybody who's retired from the Ford Jervis School Board, will be invited to the opening day breakfast. And if they want, they can come into the district-wide meeting, get an update on what's going on in the division. Or they can stay here and deal all the leftovers, whatever they want. But just to spread the word to anybody, you know, any retirees from the district, Tuesday, September fifth, at eight o'clock, everybody come here for breakfast. So we'll try to get the word out on the social media. Just to keep them part of our group. We don't want them to disappear and not feel connected.
Excellent. Thanks, John.
Okay, so dates to remember. Tuesday, August twenty-ninth, we have freshman orientation at nine AM at the high school. Wednesday and Thursday, August thirtieth and the thirty-first, we have senior portraits, eight thirty to three PM in the high school auditorium. Wednesday, August thirtieth, we have HBE, UPK and kindergarten orientation. That's at six o'clock at HBE. Thursday, August thirty-first, we have ASK kindergarten orientation from five thirty to seven thirty PM. That's at ASK. Thursday and Friday, August thirty-first and September first, we have new teacher orientation. It's all day, district-wide. Friday, September first, senior portraits again, eight thirty AM to three PM in the high school auditorium. Thursday, September seventh, we have the first day of school for students. Wednesday, September thirteenth, is the ASK PTA meeting from six thirty to eight PM in the ASK library. Wednesday, September thirteenth, is the HBE open house for grades one through three at seven PM at HBE. Thursday, September fourteenth, is the HBE open house for grades four through six at seven PM at HBE. Thursday, September fourteenth, I will see you at the Bell game at five PM at Glenette Field. And our next board meeting is Tuesday, September nineteenth, at seven PM in the high school cafeteria.
Keeping the Bell right here.
Okay. Yes, Michael?
September thirteenth is also the first high school PPSA meeting here.
Okay, thank you, Michael. All right. Thank you, Kara. With that, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn. Moved by Michael Witt. Seconded by Flo. All in favor?